Welcome to the August 27, 2020 Planning Commission Committee of the Whole meeting. This committee last met at an in-person meeting and this will be our first virtual meeting. The Committee of the Whole allows for a more detailed conversation and exploration of issues. This committee, like the Planning Commission, will likely operate in a virtual environment through the fall. I'd like to ask for your patience as we use this platform for our public meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants are having issues with technology, please send a message to the moderator. There is one discussion item on our agenda today. There are some members of the public joining us today as well. We typically do not have time limits for speakers at the Committee of the Whole, and I would ask everyone to be respectful of our time if you would like to speak. And please send a message to, if you'd like to speak, please send a message to the moderator. I would also ask that comments not be duplicative and for the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. I would also ask each commissioner to be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. The one item on our agenda today is the Midtown Area Plan. This is a city-initiated area-wide planning study that involved extensive public outreach and input. The plan recommends amendments to the comprehensive plan, which will be the focus of our discussion today. And before we get started, I will ask Travis Crane if he can give us some guidance on what are charges as a committee when reviewing this plan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I would be happy to. So first, I just, I want to acknowledge that this committee has not met in the virtual environment yet. We did last meet in person and we have not met for quite some time. So I know there are some commissioners who have not been a participant in this committee meeting. So if it's acceptable, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the structure of the committee and the goals of the committee review. And then I'll give a very high-level overview of this item and then turn it over to Jason Harden, who will walk us through the presentation today. So the Committee of the Whole is intended to be a body that performs in-depth review of a particular item. You often see rezoning cases in this committee. However, there are instances where larger planning efforts are delivered to the committee for a chance to review the policies that have been recommended and any changes to the comprehensive plan. So that really is the focus of today's discussion is a very large planning, area planning effort that has been underway for about two years in the Department of City Planning, now Planning and Development. This was an effort that was led by Jason but involved a number of different staff members, where there was extensive outreach and public input that occurred. And it ultimately culminated into a report. And this report contains what we refer to as the seven big moves. And Jason will walk through those from a high level today. But that's not all that's contained within the report. There are some recommendations to amend the comprehensive plan because that's really the intent of area planning processes is to identify any changes that could occur to the comprehensive plan through policy guidance or action items that then could be implemented by the city or reviewed in the case of any type of land use application. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jason. I'll be on the line here and can remain and answer any questions that you may have as we continue our journey through this meeting.
Thanks, Travis. I'm really excited to be here with everyone this afternoon. There has been a lot of work that's been put into this project. And by work, I'm really talking more about from the public. So many people participated in this and shared their thoughts and their visions for the future of Midtown and shaped this plan into what it is. So I'm really glad to be able to get it to the point where it is today, where it's in this final review and adoption phase. So I'm going to share my screen and please let me know once everybody's able to see that. Travis, can you see that? So Travis gave a great introduction about what was involved in this plan and what the ultimate results are. I am going to walk through the plan process and the specific recommendations in a little bit of detail. I don't want to go on too long because obviously I want to leave room for the public to make some comments and the Planning Commission to deliberate on this. But I do want to make sure that everybody has a sense of what went into this and the overall context and the input that we heard. I think that's going to be important as we have these discussions. And I'll start with, this is probably familiar to a lot of you, but I will start with the planned area. Centered roughly on North Hills, but it bends up towards Milbrook Road and a little bit beyond Six Forks Road on the west, Atlantic Avenue on the east, and then down to the Crabtree Creek and Six Forks in the south. It originated with a desire to focus on, and this is a core part of the plan, to focus on infrastructure and other public improvements. But as we got into the public input process, we did hear about some additional items that were important to address. Travis mentioned this has been a project that began a couple of years ago. It did include, the bulk of the planning took place last year in 2019, the final report published earlier this year. There was a so-called confirmation group that assisted significantly through this process. And we have a couple of the members on this call today that will weigh in. And their charge was to make sure that the public engagement effort was robust, that we were doing the best job we possibly could to reach people. And then in the end, to make sure that the results lined up with the bulk of the input that we got and to, in effect, confirm that the report is aligned with that public input. And to that point, none of the recommendations, I don't think there's any recommendation in the plan ever that 100% of people completely agreed on. But it was important to have a strong consensus. So none of these final recommendations went forward. And there were several ideas that died on the vine. They didn't go forward unless they had a very strong majority support. So a couple of highlights about the process itself, because we really do try hard to make sure that we're reaching people. So fairly extensive, multiple rounds of mailings with several thousand postcards. We did each meeting, wasn't a single meeting, but actually a meeting phase, different times, online opportunities. So multiple ways for people to participate. We had what I believe was the city's first all-Spanish-language planning meeting, significant Spanish-speaking population in the area. And we also did some outreach to employers, apartment buildings, again, making sure that we reached the most diverse possible audience that we could. So what we heard, and I'll spend a couple of slides talking about this. Number one, walkability is, if you look at the final document, it's called walkable Midtown because that was such a theme of the planning process and that we heard so many times from many destinations in this area. But people feel like they're hard to get to because transportation is generally provided by these very wide, very heavily-traveled arterials, Wake Forest, Six Forks, the Belt Line itself, of course, that are difficult or in some cases impossible to cross. And so when we asked people what were the top issues to address, that was number one. And we heard that a couple of different times. I also heard a lot about the impact of traffic on neighborhood streets as the area has added a lot of development in recent years and that's likely to continue. Respecting the scale of residential neighborhoods, stormwater, a big issue for a lot of people, housing affordability, parks and open space, streetscape, beautification improvements, and getting around by car was something that was important but actually didn't necessarily show up quite as high as some of these other priorities. We tried to ask trade-off questions because it's easy to say, I want all the great flavors of ice cream. But in reality, we can't necessarily have it all. There are compromises and trade-offs between different goals. So this is just an example. We asked, for instance, a transportation project, say, a road widening might serve the purpose of moving vehicles but might make it more difficult for people to walk to those destinations. And people said, well, try to balance that. But if there has to be a choice, people tended to lean more towards walkability and pedestrian safety and comfort. So a lot of those kinds of topics and trade-offs ultimately boiled down into five key principles. Midtown Moves, the idea of safe and reliable transportation. Midtown is growing. It's not the kind of place anymore where you just zip through it to get to somewhere else. It is becoming a place in its own right. And that means that trips, the speeds are going to be a little bit slower. It also means that it's important to make sure that people can walk to these destinations. Again, that was a key thing. Midtown Living, the idea that this is a place where there are some housing and employment opportunities. And we heard from people that they would like to be able to live in this area but aren't necessarily able to. So looking at ways to examine some land use changes in a few key areas to facilitate that. Midtown Works, that same idea about allowing employment opportunities, aesthetics, the beauty, the streetscaping, and so on, public spaces, public parks. And Midtown Green and Blue, and that's the idea that you can address stormwater and a couple of other issues at the same time. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about what that looks like. But that stormwater can be built into our infrastructure. It can slow down cars. It can provide a safe place for people to walk or bike while also treating stormwater before it gets to where we don't want it to go. Travis mentioned the seven big moves, and I'm going to go into those in just a little bit of detail. But the idea is if you understand these seven big moves, then you get the plan. There's a lot more detail if you want to dive into it. These are the key themes and key projects that are going to realize this vision that was created during the process. So the first one, I mentioned that there are these barriers to walkability. And in fact, they don't work well for driving through the area either. So the Belt Line is obviously a huge transportation asset. It's part of what made this area what it is. But it's also a barrier and it tends to funnel all trips into a couple of interchanges, which is not ideal really from any perspective. So creating a few new crossings. One, a vehicle and pedestrian and bicycle crossing. The second, a bicycle and pedestrian-only crossing a little bit further to the east, connects Wake Tech with the area south of Belt Line. I talked about the green and blue. This is what that looks like in action. The idea of green streets, where there are very wide streets, have high traffic speeds. This also goes back to that topic about traffic on neighborhood streets and safety and comfort. So the idea that on a quail hollow or a bush, these very wide streets for two lanes, creating some on-street stormwater infrastructure to catch some of the rain to, as a traffic calming device, and also create a protected, safe place for people to walk and to bike. Connected Streets, so we know that it is important that people be able to get around this area by different means, including driving. And in the future, basically, we're looking at probably a status quo for some of those larger arterial streets, Wake Forest and Six Forks. There is some improvements that can address some issues there. But they are roughly going to stay the same. What this plan provides, though, is an alternative network of streets, a much more of a grid than currently exists, to give people options. If you live in the area and you don't need to go through that interchange at Wake Forest and 440 or Six Forks and 440 to be able to do that and to have alternatives to some of those very heavily-traveled arterial routes. So transit exists in Midtown. This is a big move we call serious transit. It's very infrequent. It's 30 minutes between buses at the most. This is the idea that when you get to the point where the buses are coming every 15 minutes, then all of a sudden you're freed from being tied to the schedule and worrying about what happens if you miss the bus. So three new frequent transit routes that connect Midtown with North Carolina State and Centennial Campus with Downtown, and then a perimeter route that connects to Crabtree and Wake Med. So many, many more destinations available and a short bus ride. And then, as transit usage increases, studying a bus rapid transit connection where buses have their own space on the road and an even higher level of transit connecting Downtown with Midtown. The Midtown Ring is that idea that people just desperately want to be able to get to these destinations without having to drive. And we heard from many people who said even to get from one side of Six Forks to the other, they would often get in their car and drive across because it just is not a comfortable place to cross. So this Midtown Ring is a combination of, in some places, greenways and others protected on-street bicycle paths, wider sidewalks, a place that connects all these major destinations in a much more comfortable way. And this is an example of what that could look like along the greenway. Here's a picture from Charlotte. And it can help actually create a place where you have some water, you have urban active uses, and you have a great place for people walking, recreating. And that leads into the last couple of big moves. Again, going back and thinking about opportunities for people to live in this district that don't currently exist. So a couple, and I'll outline these, but a couple of planned use recommendations. Again, we heard that affordability is a significant issue. But at the same time, making sure, and we'll talk about height, making sure that these heights from taller mixed-use areas step down to meet lower-scale residential areas. And then the last big move, the idea that the Crabtree Creek is a significant waterway, actually wider than many rivers in the state of North Carolina. But it's, in essence, the city turns its back to that waterway, particularly in this part of the town. There's an opportunity, we realized, because there are, there is interest in building housing in this area, there is an opportunity to turn this into an active place that actually addresses the greenway and becomes the city's first true waterfront. And a couple of elements to that. One, looking at a waterfront park with very flood-prone areas right along the creek and creating a resilient park that absorbs stormwater. So it's a passive park in that sense, but also creates a place for people to gather along the waterway. And ultimately, Industrial Drive becoming the walkable spine, the walkable main street of this waterfront district. Because Wake Forest Road, Six Forks Road, we can make improvements to them in terms of safety and comfort for people walking, but they're always going to be a little bit more about moving cars. Industrial Drive is that opportunity to create a main street where it doesn't exist in this part of Midtown. Connect across with a new pedestrian bridge across the waterway and create a situation where there's a waterfront park, a greenway, and some very active uses along the waterfront. So we asked people to prioritize their top issues and did a little exercise with Midtown Bucks, where you could spend $10 Midtown and buy a new bridge or buy a park. And that was to get a sense of what was most important. And again, we heard with those pedestrian improvements, I mentioned several times during the process, that was just a huge need that we heard from people. The waterfront park, the bridges, the green streets, that alternate street network along Wake Forest and affordable housing, a key issue. So I'm going to wrap up with how, as Travis outlined, how these recommendations are memorialized and ultimately implemented. And that's through amendments to our comprehensive plan. So I'm going to go a little bit quickly through these, but I anticipate that there will be some questions and we can go back and take a closer look at as we go forward. So this is just creating a new section in the plan itself for the Midtown to Live, a new Midtown Area Planning section. And the existing Six Forks Plan is essentially incorporated into this larger Midtown Plan area. So five future land use amendments. This is the Midtown Waterfront District. I know these colors may be showing up a little bit brightly. This is Industrial Drive. And so the intent here, there is a lot of regional retail. And the intent, and this goes more broadly for the area as a whole, to create more of a balance between residential and these retail uses that draw people from a wide part of the city and even region and to allow more opportunities for people to live and work in closer proximity. So changes from mixed-use categories to residential categories. But I would note, this does envision ground-floor retail and even some office uses as well. So the intent here is to transition away from those big-box retail and more towards a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood. Six Forks Road, this is Six Forks. There are some, a handful of properties here along Six Forks that are low-density residential uses along a very busy and set-to-be-widened street, simply allowing them the opportunity to transition into office uses. And so transitioning from low-density residential future use to office and residential mixed use. Bush and St. Albans, this is an area where there's some older warehouse, industrial and office uses, and allow them, if property owners choose, to transition in the future to a more mixed-use residentially-based area. I would note that none of these change the existing zoning on someone's property. These are guides to future rezoning if a property owner chooses to pursue that. So an existing, let's say, warehouse or other use can continue to operate as long as they wish. And there's nothing in this plan that would change that zoning. Land Road, this is the street that for a short while serves as part of a parallel to Wake Forest and Falls of Moose Road. The idea here is to create a Main Street District north of the Belt Line where it currently doesn't exist. And we have some urban form guidance that helps with that as well. But also, this is one of the areas, one of the few areas where it would be more desirable for that goal to switch to a more mixed-use district. So going from medium-density residential and office to residential mixed-use to community mixed-use. And then finally, the last of these changes, this is at Six Forks and Quirk Road. And these are existing townhouses, simply allowing this future designation to change from moderate density to go up a bit to medium density to potentially in the future allow a little bit more housing near this mixed-use center. So in addition to these rather blunt future land use map categories, there's some specific guidance about height. And this goes very directly to that idea about the scale of lower-density, lower-scale residential neighborhoods nearby. And what you see here, I'm going to walk through this a little bit more slowly. The heights, the colors in blue are 20 stories. And this essentially reflects the existing 20-story zoning at North Hills on the east side of Six Forks, that you're all pretty familiar with. So the blue is matching that at 20 stories. The overall principle is that this is essentially the core of the area. There's existing 20 stories along Six Forks. So stepping down from that as we go further from that core. So allowing 20 stories simply on the other side of Six Forks from those existing 20-story buildings. And then quickly stepping down height to four stories when we meet these lower-scale residential neighborhoods. And then on the south side of the Belt Line, where the new Belt Line Bridge connection would go, also mirroring that North Hills 20 stories. And then again, stepping down the height, the purple is seven to 12, and then stepping down to three stories along Six Forks itself. And so you see this pattern repeated in a couple of other places. That, those are the highest heights in this waterfront district, recommending between seven and 12 stories. And then elsewhere, at most, seven along Wake Forest and Land, and then down to five along Six Forks and Milbrook. And again, all these places, you see those lighter yellow and pale-yellow colors where those transitions are occurring. And then finally, this brownish color, additional housing type opportunities. The idea that along some of these very busy roads, Atlantic, Milbrook, there are some detached houses that it's reasonable to allow some additional, some different housing types, duplexes, triplexes, if these property owners desire to pursue that in the future. A little bit more area-specific guidance, and this is for how buildings meet the street. So a walkable district, think about parts of North Hills, for instance, or other parts of the city that you think of as being walkable, Hillsborough Street. Buildings are usually close to the street and parking, not in between the building and the street. So the idea here is to establish that kind of condition along Six Forks. And this has recommendations for where that more urban or walkable feel is desired in the form of a zoning frontage to build, to push those buildings closer to the street. And then the green is where a little bit more of a park-like or landscape feel. So buildings a little bit further back and more landscaping as there's some transition here. And then in the more, currently, this is the part of Six Forks where there are a set of churches and less commercial uses. So a little bit more park-like feel along that section. And this zooms in just a little bit, the same image into the North Hills area and those recommendations. So I talked a couple of times about creating the grid, which is essential for handling the transportation demand. It's essential for allowing people to walk to places. If there's not a grid, you have to get where you're going on a Six Forks or a Wake Forest. And most people choose not to do that because it's not particularly comfortable. The intersections are wide, the speeds are high, there's a lot of cars. So these new gridded streets allow people to walk on a two-lane street to North Hills if they choose. And so it's really significant from all transportation perspectives. So these are areas where the plan is recommending future street grid. Now, in almost every instance, this is not something where the city will go immediately out and acquire this and tear down a building and build the street. These are streets that happen when, if and when development occurs. And now there is one exception, which would be that bridge over 440. That serves such a key transportation role that the recommendation is to proceed forward with that as a city project. And there are a couple of other pieces where there are some city projects that would probably be pretty key. But generally speaking, this is when a property redevelops, that's when that street should be established. So the similar street grid in the Midtown Waterfront Area, again, where that doesn't exist, giving people different options. Industrial Drive, I mentioned the concept is that that's the main street of this part of Midtown. And so treating it accordingly, so with narrower travel lanes, some plantings in between those travel lanes, and a protected bicycle facility and wider sidewalks. And that fits in the existing right-of-way. So the other part about how to make a place walkable is that urban form. And this goes back to those recommendations you saw along Six Forks. So there are some urban form map recommendations for designating some of these streets as so-called Main Street, which again, brings these buildings closer to the streets, encourages active uses, and creates that walkable district. So this is Industrial Drive and this is Land Road. Bicycle Facilities, this is that Midtown Ring. And this is how this is memorialized through a cooperative plan amendment that shows the core sections of the ring, Hardymon Road, Quail Hollow, Wake Town, Industrial Drive, and Bush Street, and some spurs that connect to it, to North Hills and to other parts of the area. So a few more slides here and then I'll be complete and ready to respond to questions. But do want to note that there are some specific comprehensive plan policies and actions that go beyond some of the big moves that we talked about. So some of these actions are embodied in what we just looked at, the green streets, for instance, or the connected and walkable streets. But there's some additional ones that I do think are pretty important to understand. A few additional studies, doing studies of the stormwater drainage basin. There are a couple that are present in this area and making sure that the infrastructure here, the stormwater infrastructure is adequate to meet the need. Transportation Demand Management, that's something that increasingly is a tool in our arsenal for how we handle high transportation demand. The Six Forks Study, School and Connectivity. We received a lot of feedback during a previous Six Forks study that proposed some connections. And when we proposed those, or put those out for review of this study, we again heard some negative feedback. So the recommendation there is to take a look at that, to slow down. Don't establish those connections in the same way that you saw those other street plan recommendations and do some study and really make sure that what works serves transportation needs and works for the neighborhood as well. Wake Forest Road, we heard a lot during this process. We know there's some narrow lanes, which do have the benefit of slowing down cars, but can be fairly uncomfortable. Also, Wake Forest Road, not very comfortable for people walking either. So a future study of that and how that works in the future and looking at future transportation demand is something that's going to be important. Midtown Height and Affordability are some policies that say, if there is a request for rezoning that adds a lot of development entitlement or that would result in a, would likely result in redeveloping existing apartment buildings, let's say, there ought to be some level of affordability considered as part of that rezoning. In exchange for that benefit of the additional higher entitlement, some benefit for the area and to address those affordability. and to address those affordability issues. A closer study of the waterfront district and determining what are some next steps to help really realize that vision, including taking a look at stormwater and what we can do to continue to address that as there are some changes in that district. Affordable housing development, that is a recommendation that the city partner with a nonprofit to specifically put some dedicated affordable housing in this area. It's a place where there's a lot of job opportunity, a lot of transit, some public space, and a really logical place for that. And something that when we went to hear from people during the public input process, felt like that was pretty important. And then crab tree restoration, the crab tree in this area is somewhat degraded, not just aesthetically, but functionally. There can be work done to make sure that it works more as a stream, reduce some of the flooding issues. And in conjunction with the resilient waterfront park, have a really significant benefit for stormwater in the area. So finally, when the planning commission reviews any rezoning or plan amendment, there's a look at consistency with, with the plan itself. And these are some key policies that this Midtown Plan is consistent with. So first one is that we do area plan studies and they address these kinds of issues. The policy about reducing vehicle miles through mixed uses in closer proximity to one another. And that goes to carbon reduction and a lot of other benefits. Housing variety, allowing more types of housing for people with different needs, different stages in life is a key policy. I mentioned carbon reduction, greenhouse gas reduction. That's something that this plan achieves by making walking more possible, creating shorter trips. Zoning for housing, again, more about housing choice. New parks and growth centers. So this is a growing place. I know everyone on this call knows that. And there's an opportunity with this Midtown waterfront park to create a signature place that's a benefit, not just for the city, but obviously for people who live and work in Midtown. And then sustainable and resilient stormwater management. I think in several different respects, I've probably mentioned that. And you can see that it's a key theme throughout this planning process. The comprehensive plan, before we get to public input, I want to note a couple of important points that it makes. Talks about the right to an equal voice, and that's the idea that input is equally valued regardless of how it's provided, whether it's an in-person meeting, an online meeting, a survey, or other meetings. During this process, we heard from hundreds of people, and that input really matters. And so while I know there will be some comments here today, what I'm going to try to do, if there's some requests from the commission to provide some more insight on them, is to go back to that input that we heard during the process and, and make sure that that's front and center as, as the commission considered these amendments. And then the, the people participating in the process have a lot of rights to be heard and to, to, to make sure that their voice is part of the process, but also a responsibility just to give thought to different perspectives and to, to think about the effects of these decisions on the city and region as a whole and in the long term. So lastly, and Travis touched on this, what the, the commission's role today is to make a recommendation back to city council, can make a recommendation on the amendments as proposed or can recommend specific changes. Staff will be here, I will be here, and other staff to provide additional information on input that we receive or other questions as, as needed, as they come up. So that's what I have. Thank you for indulging me to provide that somewhat lengthy background, but I did think it was important to start the conversation.
Thank you, Jason. That was a very thorough presentation and great intro to an exciting project. Before we move on to members of the public that are here to speak, I think Brian O'Haver was having some technical issues at the beginning.
I'm good now.
Okay, great. Did you want to, did we want, did you want to speak to the commission about your participation?
Please.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I, I just want, I've had some conversations with Travis and Tika and Matt's absence. And I'm working on a number of projects. My firm is working on a number of projects within this study area. It's a fairly large study area. So Travis's recommendation was just for me to make the commission aware of that and to, I guess, pretty much just ask the commission if they were comfortable with my engagement in the plan overall, knowing that there are a handful of projects within this area that, that I'm contracted to work on. And then certainly on project-specific issues, I will certainly recuse myself for any, any concern of conflict of interest. So I think, and I don't know, David, if you want to weigh in on this. I think Travis's recommendation, and again, in some conversations with Tika, I just wanted to be fully transparent and let everyone know that there, there's kind of a, potentially what Travis called a little bit of a gray. Travis, do you want, I mean, did I do an okay job with that?
You did, and I appreciate the, the comment, Commissioner O'Haver. What I would suggest is, I think you've pretty clearly articulated what you perceive as a relationship with your work in this, in the study area. I would be curious to hear from David York to see if there are pieces of the conversation that you need to recuse yourself from, or if he believes that, and the commission believes that you can continue to participate without conflict.
Sorry, I was trying to find the unmute. I, I think disclosing that is right. I think if there, for example, were motions to amend the plan or amend the draft moving along that impacted the projects you're working on, you'd need to identify those and recuse yourself from those types of motions and so forth. Then I think, since this does not grant entitlements, it's just a planning tool. I don't think you would be financially impacted by the overall adoption of this. But I don't think this is going to move with lightning speed, but I don't know. But anyway, we, we can address, I don't know exactly where all your projects are and how much they encompass. When it comes to site-specific issues that the commission or the, the committee wants to address as far as amending the draft, you would need to identify the ones that impact the projects you're involved in and, and probably recuse yourself on those.
Okay.
Okay, great. I think Commissioner Winters also wanted to address this.
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to say hello, everyone. Hello, Jason. I just wanted to share that I was a member of the confirmation group in the early stages. And I resigned when I became a part of the planning because I knew we would be looking at it again. So I just wanted to make you aware I was a part of the early stages when they were getting focus groups together and everything. So I just wanted that transparency.
Great. Thank you so much. If there isn't any other further discussion on that, I'd like to move ahead to members of the public. We have several in the meeting today who might want to provide comments. And I would ask that the moderator introduce the speakers one at a time. Again, I would ask that speakers to be respectful of our time. And could the moderator introduce the first speaker?
I would be happy to. Our first speaker is Stephen B. I'll unmute you in just a second, Stephen. All right, you are unmuted.
Great. Thank you very much. For the record, it's, it's Preckfield, so I know that does trip some people up now and then. So I was a member of the confirmation committee and served as a, was as service co-chair there with Bonner. And I think that one thing I want to emphasize is the excellent job that staff did in terms of using the confirmation committee to perform their task, which is really just to make sure there's input happening. And that goes back to, as they were designing the meetings, the public meetings, as they were designing the feedback mechanisms, really allowing the confirmation committee to be a part of those discussions and being very attentive to various ideas that came up, including with the meeting format and things along those lines. So they were very receptive to it. And I think they did a great job in terms of getting a wide swath of data and feedback. You know, as I mentioned, you know, you have 1,500 responses to surveys, 10 public meetings, and then a bunch of smaller, what they call pop-ups at various events where they'd be out there to gather information. So you really did a great job on that. The confirmation committee itself should be mentioned. It says 12 members. It included neighborhood representation, business representation, representation from Wake County Public Schools, and also one of the local churches of Midtown as well. So it was a, it was a good cross-section of the area. And I think as a result, because they did the good job of reaching out to the community, they ended up with the plan, as Jason said, that there's strong consensus. You're not going to get 100%, but you've got a very strong consensus. And it evolved down to those seven points is really where the strong feedback came from. So thank you very much for doing such a great job, guys.
Thank you very much for your comment. Does the moderator, can moderator introduce the next speaker?
Yep, we'll have Larry Helfand. Larry, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I appreciate it. And I've got to start off, I was asked to be classified, I guess, whether I'm for or against the plan. And basically, I guess I am for the plan. I think the work that Jason and his staff and the earlier work done by Reverta Fox set all this up. And I think it was extremely well done, and I think all of the products contained within it will benefit the City of Raleigh and our local area. The problem I have going beyond that was what the area plan was chartered to do. Originally, the request came from the residents in 2017 after working with Kane Realty and some of the other developers along St. Albans Road. And then all of the conditional requirements that were requested by the residents were dropped, particularly in your committee. So there was no resident feedback or input at that point. It's worse now because there are no CACs. So the only option we have now is to speak out at this point. While I say I'm in favor of the whole plan, what I have a problem with is two particular parts that you're going to review today. One is MT-21, the Six Forks Road streetscape design that Jason mentioned, which brings the buildings closer to the road. I think that's a, a nice concept. The only problem is parking, particularly in North Hills, is extremely limited. When you bring those buildings further up to the road, you're going to occupy some of that remaining parking. It's going to make it more difficult to get around North Hills, and it's going to also add a lot more occupancy that's going to access Six Forks Road. And the other problem I have is that the original request was for traffic management. And I think you did a really good job within the plan of providing a lot of options. And the other need was for comprehensive design and funding for infrastructure to meet all those needs. And again, I think the plan has done a lot of really good things. But classifying this portion of Six Forks Road for 20-story buildings, first of all, it was rejected. I shouldn't say rejected. It was omitted from the Six Forks Corridor Plan. It was subject to the area plan for further discussion. But unfortunately, it got rolled right into the airplan, almost unchanged. The land use map that's included had one accommodation for Lassiter Mill Road. That's where it used graduated building heights into the main section of the complex. What's existing now on the land use map, if you look at it, goes right from Lassiter Mill, down Six Forks, and right along the Belt Line, all set for 20-story buildings. Kane really had already designed 20-story buildings for that access, but it was put on hold, I think, until after the area plan was completed. The idea of transit is to bring people closer to transit. Okay, adding housing is a really good idea. Adding 20-story buildings is not. To date, there has not been any affordable housing contained within 20 stories or more, even though City Council has addressed it. We hate, we have yet to see what affordable housing really is. And I don't think you can do it with 20-story buildings that are expensive to build, expensive to maintain, and command high square footage. That's in summary, I guess, of everything I had to say. So bottom line is, I'm against MT-21, and I'm against AP-MT-1 without further review. I think you need to look at what you've designed for 20-story areas, refine them, particularly the buildings going up along Six Forks Road. They should have the same integrated approach of height. Right now, there are no restrictions in the area plan for that. I think it's also inconsistent with MT-20, which treats all of the Six Forks Corridor as a consistent road. Everything north of Millbrook resembles a Parkway Boulevard. We're building to step back further, a lot of landscaping and attractive to the road. If you continue with this and you look at the, the buildings that are already on the east side, there is no landscaping. There is no treescape. It was even destroyed between the Belt Line and the buildings. I'm sure future enhancements are yet to come, but right now, they are not good examples. If you go ahead, particularly with the land use as it's marked out, you're providing a nice pathway for Kane Realty, I'll call him out, to just go ahead with his rezoning plans for North Hills. Nobody knows it's coming. There was very little public discussion about it other than the Six Forks Corridor work. And I think it needs to be pulled out, discussed further, and more outreach needs to be done. Please look at what you're building in when you revisited the Six Forks Plan. Those particular elements are not beneficial. They're going to increase inhabitation of Six Forks, make it harder to access Six Forks. It's already graded F, and the improvements cited in the plan will not change that. It will remain a heavily congested road. The idea was to cut down traffic through neighborhoods. You've done that well by addressing it, and all the increased height buildings are just going to add back to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helfand, for your comments. Can the moderator introduce the next speaker, please?
Yep, next we have Patrick Martin. Patrick, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thanks very much to the Planning Commission for holding a public hearing and giving the opportunity for the public to speak. The work that has gone into this area plan has been remarkable and fantastic. Planners and the consultants have come to the Midtown CAC, and I think to the Atlantic CAC also during the 2018, 2019 time period to review and to get input. They've held many public meetings, and a lot of the residents from this area have attended the public meetings and expressed their opinion. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of duplication of what Mr. Helfand had to say. But I do want to second his concern on the building heights and density that is being permitted by the, you know, 12-story and 20-story zoning changes here. And they are changes. They were not part of the zoning when the Six Forks Road Corridor Study started. And they are not part of the zoning as it is today. These are major increases. If you look at the Lassiter Mill Shopping Center, there, it is one-story retail. And the lavender color indicates that it is going to be permitted to go up to 12 stories. That would be a 12x increase in the density of that area. And it would butt up to Rowan, West Rowan, and it would be towering over the residential area of North Hills. If you look at the lavender color on the east side of Six Forks, directly between Capitol Towers and Carroll Middle School, that would be going from three-story office buildings up to 12 stories. And the, again, that's a 4x increase in density. The, the concept of improving Six Forks, as Mr. Helfand said, will be undone by the additional massive amounts of traffic going into and leaving from these office towers and other commercial properties that would be built at these heights. Um, the, the idea of 20 stories is not anathema to the residents of the Midtown area. Uh, the residents agreed to 20-story towers up close to the Belt Line in the properties that are, uh, underway along, between St. Albans and the Belt Line, when the zoning changes for those properties were being discussed in 2017 and 2018. But to, to turn the, uh, current North Hills, uh, development into all 20 stories is going to add an incredible amount of density, uh, an incredible amount of, of car trips to and from the area that can't help but clog Six Forks Road and force traffic through the residential neighborhoods. So, um, I, I don't mean to just talk about those things. I would like to definitely give a shout out to the planners and the consultants on their, um, great, um, creative ideas of the mixed-use bridge over the Belt Line from, uh, the, uh, north to the south. The great idea of, uh, creating another waterfront park where we have nothing but some old, uh, underutilized spaces for nightclubs and, um, auto dealers. Um, great ideas on Quail Hollow Drive, uh, which is one of the avenues by which the neighbors are most fearful of cut-through traffic coming in to, um, for workers to come in and leave from all of the construction that's going on along St. Albans. The idea of combining stormwater control and wider bicycling and, uh, pedestrian pathways, and eating some of the four lanes of pavement that exist on Quail Hollow Drive right now was great. There have, there are many, many, many good things in the area plan. The increased density at North Hills and along Six Forks is not one of the great things. And we certainly would hope that the Planning Commission would pull that out, proceed with the rest of the plan, but pull that out and not let that go forward in the, uh, form in which it is expressed currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your comment. Um, could the moderator introduce the next speaker?
Yep, Isabel Maddox. Isabel, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission and planning staff. Um, I'm Isabel Maddox, Kielox 946 Raleigh 27602. I'm here this afternoon representing Greg Hobbs and various ownership entities, uh, Doug- Douglas Hobbs LLC, 343 East Six Forks LLC, IPREP Two Grove Tower LLC, and possibly others, but they're all under the umbrella of Hobbs Properties. Um, we're here, we've heard, you know, a lot about the stakeholders and, and planners and neighbors, but I'm here on behalf of, uh, actually a property owner who owns a number of properties in this area. Um, we're not necessarily oppo- opposed to the plan, but there are some things we have serious concerns about. Um, first, uh, we have concerns that there needs to be more height and density on major corridors of Six Forks and Atlantic Avenue. Uh, this particular property owner owns 333, 343, 353, and 100 East Six Forks, as well as 3008 Anderson Drive, 2001, and 2605 Atlantic Avenue. Uh, we believe that, uh, the comprehensive plan allows for four stories adjacent to single-family residential and more height for properties along major roadways. These are all major roadways, uh, with the exception of possibly of Anderson Drive. Uh, the city has allowed significant heights in North Hills, uh, and, and many of those are very close to residential properties. And we, we feel that this additional height is needed to support transit, to support affordable housing, to sup- to provide more housing for a growing population. So we're not requesting 20 stories, but we think, you know, certainly at least four and, and preferably, you know, in the five to seven range. Um, second point is on the realignment of Navajo Drive. The Hobbs own properties at 1100, 1110, 1001, and 931 Navajo. Uh, this realignment is, is noted in the plan as being development-dependent. In other words, the expense, additional right-of-way dedication and disruption is all going to be on the, the backs of the property owners. And we believe that there is a street there that works fine, that these, and, and many of these property owners have already invested money to, uh, provide for right-of-way improvements there. We feel like if the city wants to realign this street, the city should take on the burden of paying for this street. Um, we also want to point out that, uh, we are in support of the announced Midtown Exchange project by DeWitt Carolinas, uh, and don't, do not think that actually works with the realignment. Um, finally, this is a more general, uh, concern that, um, while our particular properties aren't slated to have a frontage, per se, the, the concept of eliminating parking between the buildings and the streets has been present in this plan. Uh, we have some concerns there in that if, if these properties were to redevelopment, redevelop, many of the, these have some infrastructure that's built in that was very expensive, particularly stormwater facilities, that are located in such a way that if the property were to redevelop, the idea would be that you would maintain those stormwater facilities in the location they're in, and you wouldn't be able to, uh, reposition the building vis-à-vis the street. So we, we hope that the city and the planners will be mindful of those types of expenses. Um, and, uh, that's generally the, the gist of our comments. Uh, we will, we would like to stay engaged in this process and look forward to working with the Planning Commission and planners as this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Um, can the moderator, moderator introduce the next speaker?
I will. Chuck Valdez, Chuck, you're unmuted.
Um, I, I, as, as mentioned, I need to go last. I just got this two days ago, and that's what we agreed to.
Okay, uh, very good, thank you. All right, we have a number of people who have just called in. Um, actually, we have, uh, one person, so they're not able to chat with me. Uh, I want to unmute them to see if they have comments. Adrian Elder, would you like to make comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so that concludes, there are more people who are, uh, involved on the call. That concludes folks who have confirmed that they wish to speak. I've, I've asked participants to please, uh, indicate in the chat function if you are, uh, ready or wanting to, to make comments to the, to the Planning Commission. Um, please do so there. Uh, I do believe we have, um, one more. Hang on one second. Uh, Matt Paul, you're unmuted.
Uh, thanks, Matt. Do y'all hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, good afternoon, uh, Planning Commission, Matt Paul, 421 Fayetteville Street. Just, I'll be brief. Uh, Jason, I don't know if you can pull up the, um, information I sent to you and the Planning Commission just to illustrate it, but I represent Spectrum Properties, which recently closed on about 36 acres of property. It's kind of older industrial property behind the Wegmans on Industrial Drive. And so, um, they wanted to join the conversation on the area plan now that they have control of the property and are looking at it, um, closely for redevelopment. Uh, I would like to say, first and foremost, they're very excited about the Midtown Plan and, and applaud the efforts. And I think you'll be happy to know what they envisioned for this acreage, which is directly across Industrial Drive from the new Wegmans, is largely, um, in line with what this Midtown Plan calls for, which would be, you know, taking an older industrial area and bringing housing and residential opportunities to it, making Industrial Drive into that walkable urban form that this plan is calling for, so that folks can easily get down to the waterfront area. So, so this is great in terms of, um, you know, where we want to head with Midtown. I happened to move to Midtown about, almost 20 years ago, the year before the North Hills Project and reimagining got underway, and it's been, you know, a, a great period of redevelopment and improvement. And I think this plan is going to take the area to the next level by focusing on some of these underused sites. So there are just three, uh, things that we'd like you to consider. Uh, two are pretty technical. What, the first is, this is the street plan, and I sent some photographs along with it, and it just would show that when you look at what's on the ground, that kind of, um, yellowish area that parallels Industrial Drive over to Six Forks has some really strong topography and rock. So making that connection would be very challenging. It's, it's actually off the site of the Spectrum Property, um, and they do want to put a street grid on their site. But I want to point that out just because when those street plan amendments go into effect, they do become a part of the dedication at, at site plan, and can be problematic. So we had just kind of reconfigured it a little bit to be more reflective of what is actually on the ground, uh, with a proposed amendment. So that was one. It's not showing up right now. But it's basically just the grid on the site with a, a break, um, in the, the line that goes all the way to Six Forks. The other one was a, a very slight tweak to the policy about preferential for residential. Uh, Jason mentioned that Midtown is also not just Midtown living, but Midtown working. Um, these are the pictures, and then you, you kind of saw the, um, the lines in the, in the reconfiguration right there. So that was one for your consideration, just to be, again, more reflective of what can be constructed. Uh, the other was just to, to have a little bit more balance in the language about the residential preference in the waterfront district to acknowledge there could be working employment center. This is a great employment site. So what, what Spectrum envisions is a mix of office and multifamily with that ground-level retail. And the great thing about it, it can take advantage of the Wegmans and all of the retail that, that is right there. So, uh, certainly not looking to, to bring more big-box retail, but bring users, residents, who can take advantage of what's already, uh, present there. And then, uh, Jason, just the last one is that in AP-MT-1, that there's been some discussion about the urban form, height, color. Um, this is all within the growth framework map of the city. So this site anchors the east side of that, um, the, the growth framework map. The, uh, Growth Center, North Hills is at the other end. You know, we certainly feel this is going to capture a lot of the growth of the, the future of the city. We don't want that to spread out like peanut butter and cause a lot of sprawl and traffic. So, you know, capturing that opportunity. This is one of the most buffered areas within the Midtown Plan, being right up against that CXX, CSX rail line and I-440. And so we've already heard, you know, trying to get the, the, the maximum heights up against those buffers like 440. So we would propose just increasing it from 12 to 20 there along the edges of the, the, um, 440 and the rail line to accommodate greater height. Um, I think those are, those are really the main points. Oh, it's the lastly, just with that, that, as you saw earlier, this area of the plan also has the greatest, um, sort of transit-rich, um, alignments, um, both the BRT and, and other forms of bus transit. So certainly, I think it's, it presents probably one of the best opportunities for some additional height. And again, I think the, the office and residential will be completely in line with the plan. So we would just respectfully request those, that you would consider those amendments to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul, um, for your comments. Um, Commissioner Haver, you wanted to speak?
Uh, yes, again, just for transparency, I just want to let everyone know that that's one of the projects in this area that, uh, my firm is working on. So just want to let everybody know that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Um, does the moderator want to allow Chuck Valdez to speak now, or, um, okay?
Hey, hey, Chair, we have three, uh, other speakers before. Uh, Chuck, I believe, I'm going to start with, uh, Patrick Boland. Patrick was having mic issues early. Patrick, are you on with us now?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, great, great. After one desktop and two laptops. Okay, well, Planning Commission, uh, members, want to thank you for, uh, the late invitation that we got to, uh, attend this meeting. And, um, I want to introduce myself. It's Patrick Boland. Um, I own a construction business. I'm a general contractor. Uh, name of my company is Boland Enterprises. We own a, um, uh, joint interest in a property on Bush Street, um, that right now houses, um, one single tenant that's, uh, mental health counseling. And after what Chuck, um, is my business partner that was on earlier, we've had very little time to review this. Um, I, I'm not sure, uh, what happened. Apparently, it's been going on for quite some time, um, and so part of the responsibility is on us. But just in the quick review that I've done, and with my experience of being in Raleigh now for 50 years, I'm not really enthusiastic about, for one, the, uh, the height requirements are, are, um, there on Bush Street in this proposed development, where they, um, actually, our property would be limited, limited to four stories. Uh, and our primary desire when we began this project was to create a medical practice building. Um, along Bush Street, approximately 40 to 50% of the business currently are medical-related. Um, and with plans from what I know of, of actually increasing it by quite a bit. Um, I also have, in been in communication with Duke Raleigh Hospital, and they're trying to acquire property behind them in order to possibly merge that area into a medical campus. And the way that the current design is laid out, it would be detrimental to that, and I think detrimental to the, the population in that general area. Um, to have, um, as we've talked about, walking access to these places, well, walking access to their medical requirements, um, and to their mental health, uh, requirements. So, um, that would be primarily what I'm here to speak about. And, and love the walking idea, but I think by restricting that, and then the adjoining, adjacent property on the plan is showing five stories. Um, I think to limit that general area in a close proximity to Duke Raleigh Hospital could possibly detrimental to the community and definitely detrimental to future medical availability in that area. Um, and then the rest, you know, and some of this other concerns, and I'm familiar with some of the other folks, um, that are developing in the area. I would be concerned about the stormwater remediation in that Industrial Drive area on a comprehensive level. Um, I would be concerned about, and maybe someone could, could, um, educate me a little bit better on it, but if the new development is going to be required to either keep the existing stuff in place and design their new facilities around that, or if they're going to be responsible for, for updating it or upgrading, because I think anybody that's been around Raleigh knows that's a really bad place for flooding. Um, we consistently have terrible issues down there. Um, and it's been a long time where it's not been, in my opinion, adequately addressed by the city. And so my concern would be how you do that in a way that one doesn't affect the other. And then how long does that situation take in order to get what I consider, you know, Crabtree Creek is, is to be a problem with Raleigh into something that can actually be an attribute? I think it's a great goal. I just think there needs to be quite a bit of, of study and infrastructure design not left up to the developers to try to mitigate the flooding and the stormwater problems that are already exist in that area. Um, but, um, and, but I do agree with, with some of the other, um, folks that have spoken on trying to keep the taller buildings, um, above 12 stories adjacent to large thoroughfares and things like that. But outside of that, um, thank you for your, your time and letting me speak, you know, and hopefully you'll give these thoughts some consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Boland. We appreciate your comments. Um, I believe we have another speaker.
Yep. Bonner Gaylord, you're unmuted.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, well, yes, I, I'm Bargo Gaylord and I, uh, was on the, the confirmation committee and also uh, worked for Kane Realty and, uh, was, uh, on the, the planning commission, uh, for a number of years. So, so many thanks for all the hard work you all do. I know it, it's many countless and thankless hours. So, so, um, very grateful for your service. And, uh, and also am a neighbor and live in the neighborhood. So, um, I, I just, uh, wanted to, uh, first of all, thank the, the group of planning planners and consultants and, and, uh, particularly Jason leading this project to, for, for all the hard work they did. And it really had a, um, a more robust engagement process than any, uh, small area plan I've ever seen in my, uh, ten plus years, uh, in, or fifteen plus years interacting with the city and working on these types of things. Uh, and so it was really a phenomenal job to, uh, bring together all those voices and assimilate them into one document. And of course, there's never going to be a complete agreement on everything. I, I certainly, uh, personally would, um, feel that because our city is growing at seventy people a day and we know that for environmental, social, cultural and, and economic reasons, we need to grow up and not out and have walkable transit friendly environments. And um, so my personal preference would be for there to be greater allowances of heights for the neighbors of North Hills, because frankly, North Hills is, is essentially already built out and we've essentially got the zonings that we need uh, to build what we have planned. So this is not a, um, this is not angling for uh, any personal benefit or, or professional benefit out of this. And, uh, so it, the importance of having walkable environments that do support transit that will allow for future affordable housing, you know, requires buildings to be built up the street, requires them to be built more tall so that more people can so that you do build that walkable environment. And there's, there's plenty of scientific and, uh, information out there that, that supports that. And, and I know that you all are well aware of that. So all in all, while there's components of the plan that, that I personally would like tweaked, I, I do feel that this is a uh, thoroughly vetted document. And, uh, while there could be a, um, um, tweak here or there, by and large, it represents the, the voices of the community. And while there were some themes of, uh, long time homeowners in the area who are, who are averse to anything that may bring additional traffic or a different additional residence, uh, the, the, the folks who had moved to the area were generally and recently and are excited about all that's happening or currently and want more and want to see the area develop into a, uh, with more amenities and more offerings and more walkability and more bike facilities and so forth. And, and I believe this, this plan by and large accomplishes that. So thank you, uh, Jason and all the team for the work you did. And, uh, thank you all in the planning commission for your work as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gaylord, for your comments. Um, the, does the moderator have two more speakers? Is that correct?
That's correct. See, next we have, uh, Tom Worth. Tom, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, Travis, Tom Worth here, uh, attorney, P O Box one seven nine nine Raleigh, two seven six zero two. Appearing, uh, with you all, uh, virtually in behalf of the Thompson Automotive Group, Inc. And the Thompson Investment Group, one and two, the owners, uh, of the, uh, the Lessee and the Lesors owners of the Thompson Automotive Facilities. Uh, at Wake Forest Road, twenty-six hundred Wake Forest Road and also along industrial drive. Four of the, uh, fourteen targeted, uh, properties in this plan are Thompson Properties. And I want to start out, I've heard all this about the outreach and it sounds like it's just been incredible. But the Thompsons, uh, have been at twenty-six hundred Wake Forest Roads since nineteen and sixty-seven. Uh, when they began, uh, the now deceased Willis Thompson began, uh, his automobile dealership there. And they've been there ever since. It's now in third, second and third generation with Mark Thompson and, uh, son Mark. Uh, they received no notice whatsoever of this undertaking, according to Mark Senior. Uh, I can assure you that had they received notice, they would have been involved and heard a long before now. The first notice they received, according to Mark, is the letter of August eleventh informing, uh, them and therefore me, uh, of this meeting. Uh, most regrettable, uh, those things do happen, uh, and apparently it certainly happened in this case. Um, the concern that we've got about this proposed comprehensive plan change to the future land use map revolves around the designation of the Thompson properties in their entirety for high density residential. Uh, these properties were, uh, in the comprehensive plan, uh, were designated as they are now presently designated uh, for, uh, community mixed use. And then the city remapped with the properties in, uh, two thousand and sixteen, uh, to, uh, the C X three that where they operate now. We would like the status quo to be continued and the high density residential not to be imposed on these properties. Concern, uh, for this proposal is that it might thwart future efforts on the part of this automobile dealership, family owned with a long and storied history in this community to continue, uh, to be nimble enough to respond to changes in the industry. Now I realize there are plenty of people that want, uh, only walking and biking and public transit. But the demise of the automobile, um, is not right in front of us. And, uh, these folks do a fine job for the public in this city and they would like to continue to do it there. If this change is imposed on this property, though it's only a comprehensive plan change, it will likely result in hindering their ability to do some changes on the property, uh, that might be necessary in order to keep pace with their industry. I have been involved, uh, since, in this matter, since September of two thousand and nineteen. I was called in because they have struggled to obtain approval from the city of Raleigh, from the planning department for the, uh, resurrection uh, of the fifteen thousand square foot building that looks very sad right now at the corner of industrial and Cheekside. Uh, that process continues, uh, and it has been a, quite a challenge. Hopefully the end is in sight of that particular process. The, there are a couple of things about this, physical aspects. What probably is not known, uh, by the, uh, folks on the committee is that a goodly part of the Thompson property, particularly those, uh, lots where this building is that were acquired in January of two thousand and eighteen, that's a total of about three acres are on a ancient city of Raleigh garbage dump. Uh, not properly, certainly not lined as is now required, but certainly apparently not properly compacted. I first ran into this when the Costco folks asked me to step in when they encountered some problems with the city of Raleigh Planning Department, uh, for the construction of their facility. And that's when I first learned that the garbage dump underlaying part of their property. Uh, it's pretty well established, I believe, that you do not put residences on top of garbage dumps. Uh, the sinking is one thing, uh, and of course there are sometimes some gases that are emanated, uh, from garbage dumps that are not wholesome as far as human habitation is concerned. Furthermore, uh, as, as already been, uh, mentioned by the Mr. Patrick Bowden about Crabtree Creek, the creek in this area does jump its banks periodically. It is wiped out, uh, two portions of the greenway, uh, I think boardwalk over towards Capitol Boulevard twice in the last decade or so. And I think the council is poised to do a rerouting in order for that, uh, uh, section of the greenway to be, uh, uh, reinstituted. Uh, also, Mr. Thompson has determined that bedrock, ladies and gentlemen, is twenty-three feet down. So if you're going to put any kind of a structure, uh, of significant height on this property, you're going to have to really fortify it, uh, like you would do in a coastal property with the deep, deep underpinning. Um, we feel that what should be done, it will not, as far as I can tell, at this early juncture, harm the, uh, water, uh, the Midtown waterfront park that's in prospect. We would ask that this imposition of the high density residential be removed from this plan and that we continue on as we now are permitted. Now, everybody on this, uh, conversation knows that in C X, uh, you can have residential. Uh, we're, we're limited at present on this site, uh, with the C X three. But C X certainly can accommodate residential if the future calls for such a use on that property. Uh, but we see no need at all to make a change. We share, uh, with our neighbor Costco, one thousand two hundred and twenty feet of common property line. And we would simply ask that the zoning and the comprehensive plan, uh, designation that Costco enjoys be continued with us as we now enjoy it also. So, uh, a grand plan, uh, much, uh, obviously hard work went into it. A modest request in the, in the scheme of things, but one that's critically important, uh, to my clients. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worth, for your comment. Um, could the moderator introduce our next speaker?
Yep. Chuck, I'll be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner, uh, for letting me speak. Um, like our last speaker, uh, Tom, I did not receive anything about these plans until, uh, August the eleventh. And furthermore, I put a forwarding address in with our friends at the U S Post Office who were in F. So I was unable to receive this until two days ago. So I appreciate you guys accommodating me so quickly. Um, quick question here, um, and this was really spurned by Brian's comments and I guess Tekeeta's comments on the front end. How many people, there's twelve people on the commission. Is that correct?
There's, uh, ten.
Ten. Okay, ten commissioners. How many of these commissioners, we know two already, have a direct or indirect interest in this proposed plan or were involved in this plan as provided here? Hello?
Oh, sorry. Um, um, I, I'm not sure I can answer that question. Um.
Sure you can. Uh, Brian recused himself, Tekeeta did. Uh, we know that, uh, Mr. Gaylord was part of this committee. How many people of the ten have a direct or indirect involvement to this plan?
Um, so typically we will wait for our questions until we've heard from everybody, but, um, I would like to respond to that. Um, as far as I know, and if Steph wants to correct me, I'd appreciate it. Um, we have one commission member that has active projects within the plan. And we have one commissioner that had previously participated, um, in the process that is no longer active with it. I think we may have two members in that position.
Right. They just spoke. Um, are there no others of, of the ten that have any involvement?
Not to my knowledge.
Um, how, how about this committee that went out in, uh, tried to gain this, you know, this, this support from the community? How many people on the committee have an interest, indirect or direct interest in this plan? We know, we know Kane Realty does.
I can answer that question. They all have an interest in the plan because they're stakeholders in this area. Either, uh, the residents or business owners or institutional stakeholders.
Uh, how about developers?
Um, Kane Realty is, uh, currently, as you referred, builder in the area. And again, the point of the committee was to make sure that, um, the whole spectrum of different interests were, or is a part of it. Like, so they were very deliberately representative of, uh, residents, businesses and institutions. Uh, Duke Raleigh Hospital, Lake County Schools and so on.
Okay. Yeah. Part of this is, is again me educating myself because like Tom, I'm trying to catch up because I would have been very directly involved. And by the way, my name's Chuck Valdez. I'm the managing partner of thirty-six ten Bush Street, L L C. Um, I'm a commercial real estate broker of nineteen years. I've represented municipalities, public companies, investors, developers, REITs on a national level. Um, I've been an appointed court expert in real estate matters as well. So I'm very familiar with this process. Um, and as we go back to some of the comments, uh, we, we, we heard from, um, Larry, very insightful there, Patrick insightful there. I remember when North Hills was being redeveloped. Um, and there was a lot of pushback from the neighborhood. Great project, turned out great. Um, but that there's historically been some issues with congestion, with parking, um, always a concern with height. And if my memory serves me correctly, uh, Kane Realty had some taxpayer funded, uh, uh, it was taxpayer funded, you know, participation to help kick off that project. And we talk about affordability. Um, they've spun off the aspects of that project, um, at the highest record heights per square foot on those real estate assets. Uh, they also have the highest dollars per square foot, uh, known for their rents as well. And so when I'm looking at this map labeled map A P M T one, um, it, it's, it, it seems like it's pretty, pretty self-serving when you've got all the, the, the high story buildings along that corridor of the Belt Line. And I know, I know these players. I know the Hobbs. I know, um, you know, the Thompsons. I've been in this business a while. I know Spectrum Properties, uh, I know all these players, but it seems like when I look at my plan and what you guys are proposing for our, our building over there at thirty-six ten Bush Street, um, what you're doing is adversely impacting the value of our property. Um, when you look at campuses like Duke and Durham, uh, and other campuses, there's, there's a lot of uses that you need for the elderly, um, indigent people, uh, they need, need to be near bus stops, outpatient services, um, many other things. Why we would would change an area that's already, we don't have functional obsolescence on Bush Street for those buildings. I think one of those buildings traded for almost three hundred bucks a square foot, twenty-four, thirty-six months ago. We don't have any functional obsolescence over there. Why we would try and change that makes absolutely no sense. What we should be doing, um, over there by Duke Hospital is advocating for more of a medical use, not low density residential, not medium density residential, but building that area. And if we did so, what we would do is address the concerns that, uh, Mr. Martin had, Mr. Hellefonte had, um, and, and, uh, some of these others that Larry had. Um, Spectrum Properties, it seems like when we look at that and then we look at the transportation plan and the road lighting, all the good stuff is going over there on the Kane Realty Department. And we keep saying the Midtown project, the North Hills project, and that's what it seems like this is. Um, that is the only entity that has spoken that had no conflict with what is provided and, and why should they? Uh, they're getting, you know, all, there's, you know, twenty stories, um, they're getting the density they want. Uh, they're going to redevelop that property. I'm sure they're going to start selling it off like they did before. That's what you do in the real estate game. Um, but doing so at the taxpayers' expense, doing so at the property owner's expense. And it's, it's very clear to me that this is And it's very clear to me that this is, that there's a very strong incestuous influence here on this plan. And it's, the more I hear, the more disappointed I am in saying what I say. I actually spoke with DOT Brandon Watson, I guess, 18 months ago about offering possibly a bus stop at our location over there at Bush Street in St. Albans. Again, so I am in strong opposition to this plan. And we also mentioned the assessments that could be coming about. Definitely not interested in paying for anything that's going to devalue a property, not going to pay for anything that devalues use. When you say the word guidance, guidance is not guidance. What it is, is I've dealt with neighborhood districts, I've dealt with overlay districts. And when you start putting these plan developments in play and everything going forward, as Tom mentioned, is going to be a hindrance. And he's struggling right now with his plan. And Thompson's been there forever, they're in a floodplain. We need him there. And this is just a very, very unfortunate situation. So I don't know what I need to do, but I was not given the proper amount of time to connect with the other commercial building owners. Perhaps they didn't receive the notice like Tom and I didn't receive it. So we definitely need more community involvement and do a plan that's equal and equally benefits all the citizens, all the businesses, and not just one large entity or just a few developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worth, for your comments. And I would encourage you all to continue to stay active with providing feedback. Question for the moderator, is that our last speaker?
Yes, Chair, that was the last attendee in the meeting who has indicated that they wanted to speak. I will just say again, for those listening, if you would like to make comments, please let me know in the chat function. And we can make sure that you get heard this evening. Otherwise, I believe that concludes the public comment.
Great, thank you so much. And thank you to everybody who spoke today. We really appreciate public input. It's a very important part of the process. And we will certainly take all of your comments under consideration. At this time, I would like to allow for a question and comment from the commissioners. I think we've probably heard quite a few comments today from the public already. And so my feeling would be, and we can talk about this as a commission, that we would hold the plan at the table so that we would have ample time to answer all questions and go through the maps and all of that. Additionally, what I would like to propose, if the commissioners are amenable to this, is to go through the plan, start with the seven major points and just walk through those, make sure we all get any questions or comments we have in that section. And then once we've done that, move on to the maps and walk through that way so that we can kind of go in a logical order so we're not jumping around too much. Commissioner Fox? I think you're muted.
Am I still muted?
No, you're on now, thank you.
Okay. I have two overarching questions, and I'm going to direct them to Mr. Harden, but defer them around as appropriate to other staff if you feel that's appropriate. And I'm going to acknowledge that they're big questions and that you're going to want to ask me to repeat it. And then I'm basically asking you to define the profession of planning, but I'm going to do it anyway. So can you walk through the decision-making process for land use and urban design considerations? Meaning, what goes into those decisions? Is there brownfields analysis, market analysis? And basically answering what components are qualitative and what components are quantitative in making those types of decisions? And then my second question, if you can talk about how new streets are used by staff during both the rezoning and the site plan review. And I'd like to break apart a little bit what's considered the public improvement and what's considered a private improvement.
So, good questions. The first question, basically, how do we plan? It is a really good question. And I think you set that up really well in that there's two elements of it. There is the goals and theory side of things where if we hear from people that there's a desire for more walkability and to be able to walk around your neighborhood and to go shop or to even work by walking, how do we do that? We know that there's tools for doing so, widening sidewalks, creating more comfortable streets and bicycle facilities for people, bringing buildings closer to the street so that every wall, you're not walking in front of a really large parking lot. So that's more of the theory side of the, I think your question was saying a little bit more about the more objective side of things. And so that happened in several different ways in this plan. One, through things such as data gathering and collisions and traffic counts along some main roads. But we also got a lot of objective data from the public, and that was really helpful during this process. At a couple of points, we had maps, either physical maps or online maps. And people would put a dot on the map on a place that either really worked for them and would like to see that replicated, or a place that really didn't work. And those maps told such a story. We did that for several different topics. We did it for stormwater, and you could just see that waterfront district light up. We did that and properties along the Big Branch Creek as well. And that's what helped guide the recommendation for a resilient waterfront park and the green streets to absorb stormwater. And for walkability, same kind of input. So it lights up along Six Forks and Wake Forest and those big archerys. So that helped us understand that not only did those places need to get better, but we knew that there's only so much better a six-lane road can get. And so that we also needed to create some facilities where you did not have to necessarily get on a Six Forks or Wake Forest to walk to the shop or your job. So that is how we approached that and what led to these final recommendations. The second question about new streets is also really important to how this plan is implemented. So I walked through the slides that showed those proposed additions to the street plan. And that is how, in the future, we know that those are important street connections to make. But then there's the actual process of creating that street. So typically, those happen, those occur through redevelopment. And there's a lot of redevelopment activity in this area. And so if there's a parcel on which a street is mapped, a connecting street, then that is the process. When that development goes forward with the site plan, there is the requirement that the right-of-way and at least some construction of that street occur at that point. Now, depending on exactly what type of street is designated, it may be that there's some city participation in that as well. And it may be, and I mentioned with respect to the bridge and some of the connections of Benson Drive, that there are probably purely city projects because it may be, clearly no one is going to build a bridge over a 440 as part of a development. That's something that has to be a city responsibility. And there may be that there's some connections that are so important but also not likely to happen in the near term in terms of redevelopment. If the city would want to move forward with those as well. So hopefully that answers your question. I'm happy to follow up.
All just clarifying point. So new streets that are indicated that are intended to be developed by a private property owner, the point at which they go for redevelopment of the property. The exact location of that connection is really unknown at this point, meaning it's more of a recommendation of a general vicinity of a connection because the level of detail that you get to at an area plan is not such that you would have preliminary engineering to locate a roadway, correct?
That's correct. There may be some very specific features of a site, some constraints that at this level of planning, we're not necessarily getting into. But when it comes time to actually design, for someone to design a site, become apparent. And so there is some flexibility built into that. If the street shifts 50 yards one way or the other from a public point of view, that's not necessarily important. What's important is that that connected grid be gradually developed. And so yes, there is flexibility in that process.
Thank you. Would, are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? I know this is a lot of information to take in. I think that was helpful, the explanation about what we're looking at when we're looking at the suggested streets, new streets. I think a lot of us had questions about like exactly where it was placed or why it was there. Okay. If you bear with me for a second. Let's see. So I guess at this time, it would make sense if there are, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lantman?
Sorry, I know I'm always late to these questions. A lot of questions do come up about stormwater. Can I just get an overview education as to how we approach stormwater on a planning basis? I've had a lot of these things kind of come up, and I think that that would be beneficial. I don't really understand it fully.
Sure. And that is something that, as you saw, we heard a lot about during this plan. There are two major ways that we handle stormwater issues, and they correspond pretty closely to how we address the transportation connections that I just talked about. So one is that when there is a new development, the code requires, and this is not something that was in our code 30, 40 years ago, our code has become much more aware of these stormwater issues and wants to address them. So there's a requirement that stormwater be retained on-site so that a new development essentially isn't allowing more to run off than is currently the case. And that's for fairly significant storms. So that's a significant part of it. The other part of it is for broader stormwater issues. And that's where we may hear from, and we do hear actually, from residents that are experiencing a problem. And that may be a problem that isn't going to be addressed by any kind of private development that needs a public investment to address. So we have existing programs for addressing that for very small issues that might affect a home or two. And I say small just in the sense of the number of properties, not that it's not very important to those residents. But there are programs that address those kinds of issues. For larger ones, that's where the drainage basin studies that I mentioned can come into play. And that's where we can get a much better, on a larger scale, sense of stormwater and is our existing infrastructure able to handle that or not. The study will be very helpful, but I also want to note that on a real-time basis, just as we understand where there may be transportation issues, we also understand our stormwater network and where issues may be popping up from either hearing feedback from the public or going out and doing field inspections of that existing infrastructure and making sure that it's sized to meet the need, that it is maintained adequately. So there's constant maintenance that's occurring. But certainly in a place like Midtown that's seeing a lot of evolution and a lot of new development, there is a need to go and refresh on a bigger scale those drainage basin understandings that we have.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Lantman?
Can I follow up on that? So how would these changes to stormwater regulation or management affect existing owners or developments? Would it have any impact? I mean, would it, I mean, are they grandfathered? Are they okay? But will they maybe experience some impact?
Right. So one thing I do want to make sure that everybody's clear on is that this particular plan isn't proposing changes to any regulations. It has some public projects that are pretty significant with the Green Streets and the Resilient Waterfront Park, but isn't necessarily proposing stricter regulations. Although, I want to note that there has been a citywide effort to take a closer look at our stormwater rules and make sure that they're up to the task. But for existing regulations, no, if there's a property that was built before them, it predates them, there's not a requirement to address that until the time when a new development comes in or there's a significant change to the property. And that's when the property owner may need to make a number of improvements. It could be adding a sidewalk, it could be putting in a larger stormwater retention facility. That's the point at which that happens. So actually, over time, interestingly, when you have an existing landscape that was built at a time when a lot of the stormwater requirements were not in place, over time, you can actually see some improvement for stormwater because of the additional requirements coming into effect as redevelopment occurs.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I had another high-level general question about the city's intended use of eminent domain when it comes to a lot of these projects. A lot of the times, we're talking about new street plans or other new infrastructure, public infrastructure projects. And was just going to see if there was an easy way to clarify the intended use of the city's eminent domain power here.
Really good question. I didn't use those words before, but that is what we're talking about, at least for that 440 bridge. So that, and our transportation staff may want to weigh in on this a little bit more. But the general calculation is, I think, we would all rather avoid that if possible. It's just a time-consuming process. And if it's something that can happen through the development process, that generally is easier all the way around. But there are some projects that rise to the level of needing to happen before an uncertain development timeline. Or, as in the case of that bridge, can't really be done solely as part of a development project. So that would be the one, most obvious one, where that property acquisition process could be, would need to be used to make that project happen.
And to that end, what would be the impact of us approving this plan on that eminent domain process?
So approving the plan would create that bridge project as a top priority and potentially could move forward as part of a transportation bond. There would need to be some funding identified for it, obviously. So once funding is identified, then there would be a process of design and engineering, refining that final route, the best alignment with an eye towards minimizing property impacts. But once that's done, then acquiring the necessary right-of-way and constructing the project. So approving the plan would set that series of events in motion.
And just to clarify, you said that that's the only project that would require the eminent domain power? Or could there potentially be others as well that would be impacted by approving this plan?
It's the most obvious one. And so the plan doesn't necessarily say this should happen through eminent development, eminent domain, and the others should wait. It does set priorities for which ones are most important, and that is probably the most important project in the plan for a range of reasons. The other one that I think maybe likely to potentially occur through that process is a section of Benson Drive that would connect two different pieces of Benson. And so one of the issues that the plan is addressing is that, as I mentioned before, essentially, all the trips are funnel onto either Six Forks or Wake Forest. And so where we can create alternatives or parallels to those streets, it better serves people walking, it better serves people driving, better serves residents. And so there's an opportunity with Benson to start to stitch together a parallel street network. And there's a key missing section between those two parts. And there's a key missing section between those two parts that I think may also be a candidate for at least a partnership with the property owner. The difference between that Benson section and the bridge is that there, that property is currently undeveloped. So there would be less of an impact.
Okay, thank you. I thought it might be helpful before we move on to quickly summarize some of the comments that we heard from the public, just to kind of organize ourselves. And I may jump around a little bit, so bear with me. But I think we heard comments from the public in reference to some concerns about the 20-story, the areas that were recommending 20 stories in height. And so that might be worth some discussion from us. We also heard feedback that there were some areas that needed more height, for instance, like at Six Forks and Atlantic. There were some concerns about the realignment of Navajo Drive. So that might be worth to discuss. Also, some questions about what the process would look like for properties that have already installed stormwater devices or stormwater management, and how would that work moving forward as they would be required to kind of bring up the property at a different standard. Additionally, clarifying policy language around the mix of residential and office uses so that larger employers can also do that along with multifamily, increase, again, this is also increasing from 12 to 20 stories. And then looking at tweaking the street plan where there's topographic challenges. So I might need some help in identifying where that is. Additionally, we heard from, from the public that there were some areas where the height requirements weren't tall enough, that they were on the low side and that, and then some concerns specifically about the stormwater along Industrial Drive. And then we also heard about some concerns about remapping areas that had community mixed use to higher density residential. And addressing flooding along Crabtree Creek. And then some concerns or addressing or having discussion about where development is being encouraged and making sure that it's equitably distributed throughout the plan. I think those were the major points that we heard from the public. Commissioner Haver?
Sorry, thank you, Tika. I want to back up for a second. I had my, I think you missed it, but I did want to follow up, I guess, to Commissioner Miller's question, not necessarily about eminent domain, but Jason, you at the beginning mentioned two bridges across the Belt Line. And then as you continue to discuss, you're talking about one bridge. And so is this, is this a high priority project, the pedestrian bridge, or is it the pedestrian and vehicular bridge?
The pedestrian and vehicular bridge. And that was from Navajo Drive. And I tell you what, it may be helpful for me to share my screen as we talk through some of these. So I'm going to do that real quickly so I can, so we can all see the areas that we're talking about. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this map is showing a lot, but for the purposes of illustrating this question, this is showing that vehicle and pedestrian bridge here connecting from Barrett Drive to Navajo. And that's what provides a connection for people who otherwise don't need to go through the Six Forks interchange or the Wake Forest interchange. The second bridge is not shown on this because this is showing the street plan itself, but it continues from Industrial Drive, the, the main street of the waterfront district. And that is a pedestrian bicycle only bridge that connects to Bush Street here, right next to Wake Tech and the intent there to connect this part of the plan area with the rapidly redeveloping part south of Four Forks. And so our priority bridge is that, they're both important, but the higher priority bridge is the multimodal bridge.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then while you, can you pull back up that aerial that talked about the waterfront district and the waterfront park?
Yes.
Because what struck me early in your presentation, so is that, so speaking of, is that city owned land that's all in green there? Or what was the thinking of that? That just appears, I don't know. Appears to be privately held, so what was the thinking of that?
That's right. It's not city owned. The city does own some land alongside the Greenway, but the recommendation here is to acquire some additional land for, again, the purposes of providing that public space, the park, and as a stormwater feature. So the recommendation is to acquire that property that's not now city owned. Much of this is within the floodplain. So it's also, again, a strategy for addressing those floodplain issues along the Crabtree.
Right. Thank you for those clarifications. Sorry, sorry, Tika, I took it backwards a little bit.
That's okay.
Give those questions. And sorry, keep on rolling.
Thank you. So it's been brought to my attention that could, I'm getting some feedback. Could everybody mute their microphones who's not actively speaking? Mr. Harden, could you mute your microphone?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that, that was, helped. So apparently, we have two people from the public that have asked if they could ask questions. And so I just wanted to bring back to the commission table and ask if you all would, would like to allow them to speak and would like to hear from them. Larry Helfand and Chuck Valdez would both like to ask additional questions. And Mr. Harden, we're getting a lot of like background noise from your microphone.
Sorry. Let me make sure.
Thank you. You, okay. All right. Hold on. Oof. Okay, I'm back. What is the will of the commission? Would we like to allow the public, these two? And yes, I'm getting some thumbs up. All right, great. Mr. Clem, if you could unmute them one at a time, that'd be great.
Yep. Larry Helfand, you've been unmuted. Would you like to ask your question?
For the second time. First of all, I wanted to comment on Bonner Gaylord's statement that he thinks Kane Realty has asked for all the zoning that he's going to need for high rise buildings. That certainly is not true to my knowledge. The JCPenney's lease is up. There was a lot of talk about constructing 20 story buildings in that area. Other buildings, well, other sites, other small businesses have had the same experience where once their lease wasn't renewed, they had to close. So there are, are a lot of vacant spaces exist within the North Hills Mall area. And I suspect that there will be a rezoning request from Kane Realty. The second thing I wanted to address real quickly was the question of why was the land map essentially rolled into the Midtown Plan unchanged? I know you made an exception for Lassiter Mill. You have a policy LU 5.4 for density transitions. Why didn't you apply that for the areas along Six Forks Road? I'm just curious why you rolled it in essentially intact when it was so controversial before? I'm done. Thank you.
Would the chair like stop to answer?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. So yes, it's a good question. And for a little bit of background, there was a prior planning effort along Six Forks Road called Six Forks Corridor Study that ultimately concluded in a recommendation to widen Six Forks Road to six lanes, include a tree line median, some improvements for, for people walking and people biking. That process also had included some land use recommendations, which is pretty commonly the case. We tend to look at transportation and land use at the same time. When that process got to essentially the, the end of the process, there was a lot of comment and concern about those land use recommendations. And the, the decision was to pull those out of the plan, not adopt those, but to put them into the Midtown Plan. What was generally said, what we heard at least during that discussion about Six Forks, which is that people, was people didn't realize that those land use recommendations were a part of the plan. They were very focused on the design and function of Six Forks itself and should have been widened. And so a lot of what we heard was, well, we didn't know this was a land use plan as well. We thought it was just transportation. And so part of the idea was that to put that front and center in this Midtown Plan and let people take a look at it. We didn't necessarily hear that it was wrong. We heard, now, we know that some people didn't like those recommendations, but what we heard was that people didn't know that that was happening. And so our thought process with this was to go ahead and take those recommendations and put them back when there's more of a focus. And this plan from the outset was clear that it was going to consider land uses. So to put those recommendations out there and as a starting point and, and see what we heard. And in fact, we did get a lot of input on those recommendations. And actually, I think it will help, again, if I can share my screen, illustrate something pretty briefly. Are you able to see that map? Okay. So this is the, the area that is in question. And this in purple is the existing North Hills East. This is Six Forks Road. And what the original Six Forks Corridor Study had recommended was a uniform 20 stories in this red section here, which makes up most of the existing North Hills on, on that side of Six Forks. And this got some very negative feedback when we put it out there as part of the Midtown process. People did not feel that that provided an adequate transition to these lower scale residential neighborhoods. And so the recommendation, we, we wanted to hear that feedback. And so this is an example of where the plan evolved during the process and responded to public input. So the recommendation was on this part of this area that's directly across from the lower scale neighborhood, scale it down. Don't have a 20 story wall here, but scale it down to 12 stories and then to four stories along the street itself. There was some talk about a rezoning of the JCPenneys. That's possible. Who knows what happens in the future, but that's what this kind of guidance is for, if there is a rezoning, to provide some sense of, of how that ought to be structured so that it doesn't loom over these surrounding neighborhoods. While I'm showing this map, there was another significant bit of input that we got when we put the Six Forks recommendations back out. And that was it proposed some new street connections, which I alluded to earlier, right around, this is the middle school. And those were very controversial as well. I know during the Six Forks process, there were a lot, a lot of comment about those. And we, again, heard a lot of comment in Midtown. So that's why we took them out of this plan and said, if there are any, it deserves a little bit of a closer study. And at that point, the decision would be made. So those are two key ways where we, we put those recommendations back out and we've got a lot of feedback and adapted to it. Now, that said, that happened in the middle of this process. And at the end, once we had made revisions based on that feedback, we put what you're seeing here back out in front of the public for a meeting phase and had online input. And that does say that 20 stories is appropriate across the street from where there are 20 stories. And again, this is essentially the epicenter of this area and the point at which the, there's already precedent for the highest amount of intensity and the tallest buildings. And the plan finding it reasonable to allow some of that on the other side of the street. But of course, we wanted to get some feedback on that. And that was supported by 60% of the participants in that last phase. And in fact, again, every final recommendation had to at least hit that 60% mark, or it didn't become a part of the final plan. So we took away from that, that the people did find that to be a reasonable way to accommodate more employment and other uses in this area while transitioning down to the lower scale neighborhoods.
All right. I don't see anybody raising their hand. So I think what I'd like to do is just walk through the seven kind of big, major points or the seven big moves. And
This is the Adam Chair?
Yes.
There, there was one other person who y'all
Oh.
from. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Not at all. Thank you.
Yep. Chuck, Chuck Valdez, you are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. I didn't ask one of my main questions because I was responding earlier. But if you go to, I guess, Jason, can you pull up that proposed designation for my property over there at 3610 Bush Street, St. Albans and Bush Street, please? Okay, I see it. How, how did you guys come up? I mean, I'm pretty familiar with what's going on being in commercial real estate. How did you come up with that, selecting that area right there to change from business and commercial to medium density residential? I mean, I understand what's going on on Atlantic and Tar Heel. I know what kind of properties are back there. But how did you come up with those? Has, has anyone been in towards some of those properties? I mean, we've got some really solid, good office buildings over there that are in that area. How did we, how did we determine? There's no functional
So, good question, and I'll address that. So picture, what we discovered as we went into this planning process, there was a lot of market analysis that was done at the outset, and of course, a lot of public input. And both those pointed to the fact that there was a need and desire for more residential opportunities in this area. So this recommendation, and again, I would underline that it doesn't change the existing zoning. It's a guide if people desire to change that zoning. But to provide a location where some residential opportunities are potentially possible in the future. And the question also had to do with that particular location. And that was chosen because if, if you can see the map, it's across the street from an existing residential area. And so typically, we would try to avoid such a stark transition from residential area to a warehouse industrial area. So the idea with this recommendation is to do two things at once, to provide that transition over the long term and to provide some additional residential opportunities. Again, though, while if current owners want to maintain their current zoning, they're certainly able to do so.
Okay, Mr. Clem, that that was the the second person that wanted to speak, right? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fox. And then Commissioner.
Harden, am I muted?
You're unmuted.
Hey, did staff perform a soft side analysis? And if so, is that in the final report or would that have been? Is that available on the website?
As part of the market analysis that was done at the outset, there was not a formal soft side analysis. And for everybody on the call, that's the idea of identifying specific properties that are are likely to see a change in use because the existing building is past a certain age or the value of the land has outstripped the value of the building. And so those are signs and it's likely to see a new building or a change in use. It didn't get that specific, but it did identify market trends. Again, seeing a desire, a demand for more residential and actually seeing a drop in demand, at least in this area, over the long term for industrial uses.
Commissioner Haver?
Yes, I have another question for Jason as well. And I don't know that it necessarily is specific to Mr. Valdez's site. But I did have a question about this even from your initial presentation. And you just mentioned again that it doesn't, this plan doesn't change the zoning. You maintain the current zoning. But if we were to use that that example that we just viewed, not sure what the existing zoning is on that site. But if that if a particular property owner wanted to rezone for a different use other than residential so that it was more dense or for some other use, does this then, does this plan then work against them because it's not residential use regardless of what the market will bear or what the the desire of the property owner is? And again, this is not specific to Mr. Valdez. It's just a question I had earlier and it just reminded me that I wanted to ask you that.
So that is correct. It would, this future land use map guidance, it would support a rezoning for residential uses or residential with, say, some retail on the ground floor, but would not support a rezoning for industrial uses or other larger scale commercial.
Yeah, so the current zoning, let's just assume it's commercial. If they wanted to be more dense and commercial, then it would, it would, it would sort of, I guess, to a certain degree, work against that particular owner.
It would. The current zoning is, just because it was mentioned, is I X three, industrial mixed use, three stories. So pretty sufficient for those types of warehouse industrial uses. And so again, that option to retain that is there. But you're correct that if there was a desire to resume to a more commercial mixed use category with more than three stories, it would not be supported by that future land use map guidance.
Okay, thanks. Great clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Lampman?
One more high level question. The concept of how does a plan like this support Raleigh's overall plan of growth? I would assume that, you know, since this is new, there's probably going to be a lot of excitement and and infrastructure coming this way. Does that, how does that factor into other areas of Raleigh who maybe have needed additional attention for a while or needed funding or, you know, I think, you know, downtown was looking at attention in terms of creating a more livable, walkable space downtown. So how does this pull resources over time from one area to another?
That is a really good question. And and that is the kind of question that city council has to to wrestle with when they look at prioritizing projects. And that's something that staff assist with. And so there's two parts to it. There's looking at the need in terms of are there obvious and justifiable needs for infrastructure based on the level of development, for instance? And then there's the equity perspective of it, geographic equity and making sure that an area planning process in fact like this doesn't necessarily, just because it occurred, deliver more benefits or more projects to an area just because there was this kind of conversation. So ultimately, staff helps in prioritizing or at least showing the need for certain projects. And city council determines in the end, makes the decisions about whether to go forward with a park project or a street project. And those are always key questions, frankly, to make sure that different parts of the city are being treated equitably. Now, that said, I think we all know and we're hearing in this call that this is a place that has seen a lot of change and is likely to continue to see change. And from a more citywide perspective, it's a place where demands on infrastructure have been growing. And and there is a fairly clear need to make sure that the infrastructure there is sufficient. And also, again, from that citywide or even regional perspective, this is and has been for a while designated as a growth center, a place where it's reasonable because we have an existing mix of uses, because we have a fairly high level of infrastructure already to accommodate that new growth and new housing and new employment opportunities. And part of that is the recognition that it's it's not occurring in places like this that are increasingly emerging as places in their own right. It's occurring in places on the fringes of the city or region, which actually can have increased demands on, say, stormwater or traffic volumes because you're looking at potentially more spread out with longer trips, more impervious surfaces. So that's that's a factor in how these areas work as well. When there's an opportunity to, in a place where it makes sense, to accommodate some of those demands for for where people in the future will live and work.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Fox, I'm just now seeing your chat. Thank you. So if the if if this, everyone on the commission feels like this is a good way to go, I.
I'm I'm sorry, Commissioner Bennett had her hand raised.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you saw Commissioner Bennett had her hand raised.
No, I did not. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Jason, how are we, how is the city factoring in the studies and the surveys that are coming out? I just read one yesterday about, I guess, employment and location decisions post pandemic. I'm reading a lot of data showing that significantly more people are going to be working from home. And I'm looking at this plan, which is proposing a lot more office. How do we factor that in? I mean, are we going to be building a lot more office that people aren't necessarily going to be occupying? Well, I I realized this plan was developed, you know, prior to everything that's going on now. We can't really see out into the future. But what what we're seeing in some of these studies is that a lot of employment where it's feasible is going to be done remotely since it's shown now that it can work successfully.
I agree with that. And while it's it's hard, obviously, to predict with incredibly high confidence what will happen in the future, it seems very likely that we are at an inflection point because of COVID, accelerating previously existing trends towards working from home, shopping online. And I agree, it's a relevant, a very relevant consideration for how we think about this plan. In terms of land use, I would say that the plan in those certain locations where it does envision more height, if that doesn't come to play, that's something I don't think a a private investor or developer is going to build office if they don't think there's demand for it. So what that in reality means is some of those projects just may not happen. It may be that instead of a twenty story building, there's something much lower than that. The plan would say that if if there is demand, then that might be reasonable. But it doesn't say it has to happen. And and if it doesn't, you know, then it doesn't. Where I do think there potentially is more of an impact is on the other side of things, not the land use side, the infrastructure side with respect to transportation particularly. Because there has been some speculation that we may never see the the level of transportation demand that we saw pre-COVID again, or at least for a very long time because of those factors. And so a question would be, well, how does that impact those big moves and those changes that we just walked through? Well, virtually all of those serve multiple goals. They weren't, and that goes back to that core goal. They weren't designed to move cars quickly through Midtown. They were designed to allow people to to walk more to for for work or for shopping or recreation. We have seen a really high demand for that and for people getting out and walking and biking. And so these recommendations were always aimed at allowing that to happen while also creating a more resilient street grid for people driving. So they they still hold up. But I do think that probably before a very major project goes forward, there's going to be a close look. Because nobody wants to build infrastructure, costly infrastructure that we have to maintain in the future and that's not justified by the demand. So I know that there will be a look before any big picture projects to make sure that the underlying rationale still holds true. And I mentioned a couple of studies and probably the biggest one with respect to this question is that Wake Forest Road study. So the the plan took a look at that. And we know that there are some some issues with how people experience Wake Forest Road. And that was projected pre-COVID to see pretty high demand. It's not going to see that level of demand, at least for some time. So that study, which we still think is important to do, that is a really good opportunity for us to take a look at once we're hopefully a little bit deeper into the COVID or post-COVID age, your transportation demand looks like. And so we can help to calibrate future projects based on if we're truly in a new reality, what that reality looks like.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had some very lively discussion and good questions. I I think I'm just going to sort of walk through the seven big moves. I think we've touched upon quite a few of these just in terms of broad picture. But if someone has a specific question in that category, they can kind of ask as I go through it. Crossing the Belt Line, I think we had a couple of questions about where that was occurring. Does anybody have any additional, at least kind of just general questions about that item? And the next one is green streets and green streets and stormwater infrastructure. And I think we've had some discussion on that. Making sure no one's raising their hand. Connected streets and pedestrian safety. Does anybody have any specific questions in that area? Seeing none, I'll move ahead. Serious transit. I think we, Commissioner Fox?
I would like to get a better sense of how some of the transit improvements are related to the Wake County Transit Plan and their current ongoing survey related to changing their funding priorities.
Right, so two parts to that question. The the first part is all these, and there may be a question that some of you have about funding. So all these are proposed to be funded by the Wake County sales tax that voters approved in 2016, which is also paying for a really broad suite of transit improvements, not just in Raleigh, but across the county. And so all those originated as as ways to realize the benefits of that transit sales tax and to create what the the bus planners call a frequent network of transit routes that connects all the the major centers of the city with each other. And so those were out there. It made sense to include those in part of the planning process for Midtown so people understood what was out there and could weigh in on if we had some strong feedback on, are these the exactly correct routes? Are there some other thoughts about how to improve transit service? So that's why they're a big part of this plan and the the future for Midtown. The second question, another COVID question, we have seen obviously a drop in sales taxes, at least temporarily this year. And there that has resulted in a need to to reprioritize some of these transit projects that are going to be paid for by the sales tax, at least in part. And so that remains to be seen exactly how that would affect these specific projects. But generally, I anticipate that some of the the improvements to routes in terms of frequency will be delayed because of the the drop in thing. Some of them may need to to be rethought entirely. Now, that's a question that we can't answer yet. It's too soon. We don't know if if a vaccine is developed in two months, then all of a sudden, we may see a big jump. It may be that we've already experienced enough economic damage that will be lasting. And we really will have to think through some of these questions harder. But the short answer is there will be some impact, but it right now it's uncertain to say specifically.
A little bit more about, I don't believe the Bus Rapid Transit concept is included in the Wake County Transit Plan currently, is it?
Correct, at least not as part of this Midtown plan, how it envisions that. Bus Rapid Transit is funded by the sales tax for four routes extending in each direction from downtown, out New Bern Avenue, south towards Garner, west towards Cary. And then the one that's relevant here is extending north from downtown, essentially Capital. And currently, it would stop short of the Belt Line and stop short of Midtown. There has been some planning about extending that further north along Capital up to Triangle Town Center. And of course, this plan is proposing some additional study about extending that to Midtown. It's again, it's that next higher level of transit past that frequent network to where stops evolved into stations and things that slow the buses down are removed from the equation.
Okay, thank you. The next item, what is the Midtown Ring? Does anybody have questions in that area? Okay, seeing none. The Midtown, oh, I feel like, the Mid Midtown Living, Midtown Works and Land Use Guidance. And I I I would venture to say we've heard quite a few questions in this area. And this might be one that would be good to continue our discussion on it at our next meeting. Okay.
And I would note just quickly that if if there is a decision to continue at the next meeting, that what staff can do in the meantime is is focus on those specific comments that we heard this evening and provide some specific information so that it would be easier for the commission to take a look at. Here's the comment. Here's the specific recommendation. Here's what we heard during the planning process. And I I think that would set the table for you to be able to to work through that and make some recommendations.
That would great. Thank you. Commissioner Fox? Okay, hear you.
I'm muted.
I can hear you now.
There we go. In addition, Jason, can you provide some comparison at the next meeting between Six Forks Corridor recommendations and the current recommendations and and why some of those changes were made? You talked about some of them kind of a high level, but I'd like to be able to look at that in response to Mr. Hapens and Mr. Martin's comments.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Haver?
I think I think Jason mentioned this, but yeah, I was going to suggest that if we could synthesize the comments from the public so that we have those sort of at our fingertips to review those so that we can relate those back to the plan. I I think, Jason, that's what you were suggesting. I just wanted to make. I, I think, Jason, that's what you were asking, I just wanted to make sure that's what I heard. Great, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
Nothing else to add. I was just going to ask the same question, clarify the same thing as Brian. And then maybe just talk about what other next steps might be appropriate if, if we need to vote to table this until the next committee of the whole meeting or what some of the next steps would be.
Okay. I would like to, if we could take a minute and just walk through the last couple items, just as a general overview. The Midtown Waterfront District, if anybody had any specific questions or comments on that. And then lastly, that brings us to the Six Forks Corridor Study, which I think Commissioner Fox just asked about. Commissioner Winters?
Okay, I did have a question in terms of like the waterfront. I know this, one in particular that I would like question answered is like Action 14, Affordable Housing Development. What exactly does that mean? What is the definition of affordable housing, especially when you're looking at amenities such as waterfront property? So to get a better understanding of what that means and how, what that looks like and when you're saying private efforts with whom, if that's already been established or some people that would be interested in partnering to do this, to give a better understanding as to what that means? And possibly throughout the whole project because I'm, I'm hearing the word affordable housing and it seems to be a key phrase now, but there really isn't any definition as to what that means, what AMI that means, X, Y, Z. And I, and just to get a better idea throughout this whole project and if there are certain pockets in particular where there will be variations, that would be helpful to know as well.
Great, thank you.
Just to clarify, is that a question for now or for future discussion? I'm happy to answer.
Okay, I think for me, if you can give a, a broad view now, but as we're drilling down with specifics, I'd like, it would be nice to see where, where that is and how and what that looks like. And if partnerships, as they're saying, private efforts with what that looks like, just have a, as we're looking at it, we're having a bigger picture when we're using such important words and terms and needs as housing.
Right. Yeah, so I'll, so to answer quickly, so affordable in this sense, and sometimes we get very specific about that and we should because affordable can mean different things. In this sense, the plan is envisioning 80% or below of AMI, just that more general definition of affordable. And it's, it's true that in some cases, we've, we've looked and, and tried to specify more depth of affordability or more different categories, getting out to very low income levels, which is a very important need. But this plan, when, when it comes to the location or process of delivery of that affordable housing or exactly the affordability targets, it's not, it's not that level of specific yet. The intent here, it was something that we heard about in the process and, and simply wanted to raise that as something that ought to be a follow-up. The city does or potentially will have some resources coming out of the housing bond, should that be approved. And so a way this could be implemented would be to acquire some property in the area if that's the case, for the purposes of affordable housing. If that's the case, then that gives the city a lot of leverage to be able to decide exactly how many units and what level of affordability. This plan did not get that deep into those specifics, just that it's a very logical site for some affordable housing. Want to make sure, again, this goes back to that question about equity. We want to make sure if there are some city investments that are making this into a really nice place, that it not be something that isn't available to people of varying income levels.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just one follow-up.
Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. And just as a follow-up to that and looking at the plan, is there any land available for the city to purchase? Because it looks as though it's pretty much spoken for.
There definitely are some potential parcels in, in that area or really throughout the plan area. Depends on a, a willing buyer, but particularly in, in that waterfront district, there are some underused properties. There are some properties that property owners may wish to sell. We, we certainly didn't go as far as to inquire with particular property owners because we're just not at that phase of readiness yet. But yes, I do think there would be the potential to find a property there.
Was there any? Were those properties like identified? Is there some way to have a sense of kind of how many parcels there are and where they exist? Is, was that part of the study?
It, it did not get that specific.
Okay, so it sounds like there are some questions from the commissioners around affordable housing development overall for the plan and then specifically how it works at the waterfront district. I see a lot of yeses. Okay. Are there any other specific questions that commissioners have at this time? Okay, seeing none. It sounds like that there's some out, quite a few outstanding issues that would warrant further discussion. Additionally, I think it would be useful for us to walk through and specifically look at the maps and talk about those. And so without objection, I would like to ask for this item to be held at the, in committee and then to be discussed at our next meeting, which is on September 24th. So if nobody has, yeah, Commissioner Miller?
I was going to second it if you were making a motion.
Oh, I don't think we have to make a motion.
Okay.
Is that correct, Travis? Yep.
That's correct.
So. Is it, would it be appropriate as commissioners are digesting all this information and, and thinking about some of the responses that we've gotten and the questions from the public, if we have additional questions, specific questions to reach out to staff and provide them through email or call or whatever, to be included in the packet for a meeting in September?
Yes, ma'am. If any commissioner wishes, they could reach out directly to me with questions and I can coordinate the response back at the next meeting.
Great, I think that would be very helpful. Give us some time to digest this, a lot of information. I did want to note that, you know, we've heard overall some really complimentary comments. This seems like a very thorough and engaged process and there's some really exciting concepts and recommendations for this area that, you know, we've seen and are discussing and it's a lot of information. So thank you for bearing with us as we kind of go through it bit by bit. And I appreciate all the public input, staff's input and also fellow commissioners for your thoughtful questions. And if there's no further questions, then we are adjourned. All right, thank you, everybody.